Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, February seventeenth at five thirty-two P M. I am in council chambers along with municipal coordinator Duarte, C A O De Jong and CFO Rook. And this is the committee of the whole meeting and I'm calling the meeting to a halt. And putting forward a motion to adopt the agenda. Can I have a secondary? Thank you. Any changes, amendments? C A O, do you have any sponsors, anything? Hey, again, this is the, you know, the whole good, nothing, no public, there is no public, so we'll move on to review and approval prior minutes. Harken back to yesterday. I'm sure it seems like yesterday, but maybe not November thirtieth and December first. I'll put forward the motion that the council strategy committee meeting minutes November thirtieth and December twenty-four, twenty twenty-one be approved and circulated. I have a secondary, thank you. Any discussion? I have none.
Just very wrong. Can you give me a second? I seem to have only opened up the closed meeting packages. Can you give me one sec?
Neville, I'm going to park you for a second, Fred. Why don't you go?
Yeah, on page, page number is not here. Oh, two, two of four on all the points. Mentioned from staff, I know it's a discussion point, and so it's not anything we've necessarily agreed to. But down to about halfway down the page, talking about the bridge designed for forestry access that was repurposed to our needs, not the highway or not highway. I do recall mentioning that it was used as a temporary Alberta Creek Bridge during the building of the channeling project. I think it's misleading if we just leave it. It's not a highway bridge. It, it sounds like it's not robust enough to carry the weight, but it certainly was with those massive I beams on it. So just a point of clarity, if you don't mind.
Find me, okay, with everybody else. Okay, thank you. Counsel rabbit?
I'm really struggling. I.
Tell you what, Counsel Rabbit, why don't we, why don't we hold this Counsel Rabbit and we'll come back to it and you can double task. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. We'll give you another minute or two. Business arising from the minutes. I have none. I think we're living the dream here as we have, yes.
I just wanted to update council on the asbestos water, some water main issue. We did test for asbestos fibers and it came back negative. We'll continue to test every year and advise council of the results on a yearly basis.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel Bremer.
That's just a thumbs up to know asbestos.
Yeah, that's good news. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, hey, very good. And all right, anything else on the unfinished business there being none will before I go on, Counsel Rabbit, are you ready?
Think I have a failure. Do we have the same file number description for the closed and the open? I think I just deleted my, my notes on the open. Has he deleted them on Sunday after I spent all the?
There's a total of four packages. The only package that was replaced was the regular council meeting package. So there's two closed, two open.
Yeah, I have two packages called twenty-two oh five fifteen C O T W package. And one of them, when you open it.
One of them is a, is got a bracket.
The regular meeting?
The other one has a bracket for, so bracket three is the open, close, pardon me, bracket three or bracket four is the open.
Both is the same file name and I'm deleting them on that.
I tell you what, Counsel Rabbit, I, I know that.
They were the same file name.
I. We'll get a chance to this, do this. I mean, we'll, we'll keep looking for it. And if you need a minute to find it, then we'll stop, but let's get on to the key purpose of the meeting. And so municipal coordinator, can you remind me that we're basically at the discussion piece on the minutes that haven't been accepted? And I'd like to conclude them before I take them over to the main meeting, by the way? No, okay. Well, at the very, what we'll do then, I say, I can pause the meeting to close it. And then we can open it back again once Counsel Rabbit found the stuff somewhere during the evening. Yes, okay. So Counsel Rabbit, first thing before we go public, tilt your screen a little different. You're looking kind of just like the guy who hangs onto the wall there like that. There you go. You're good now. Thank you. So unfinished business, there being none that we haven't talked about. Next is staff reports. And that's the main purpose for this evening. And before I hand it over to CFO Rook, with the four packages, it's a busy and brisk evening tonight. Nothing is going to go unturned. But what we will do is run out of time. So we started at five thirty, we're moving in one briskly. My proposal is that at six thirty, we stop the regular committee of the whole maybe and we move into in camera for half an hour. And then we'll go to the open. So what we would do is that during the questions, question and answer period of the preliminary budget, what I propose to do is go in alphabetical rotation, starting with Counsel Rabbit, concluding with me, and then we'll go through it a second time. I think I know my counselors fairly well. Counsel Rabbit, if I could ask you mentally time yourself, because I know municipal coordinator will actually be timing you. If you could hold your Q and A for the first round to ten minutes. And then we'll go through counselors, Bane, Bremer, Kandla, and myself, and then we'll go through it again. I trust that'll meet with everybody. And again, we're not trying to not leave any questions unanswered. Although we will tonight, our budget is simply too short.
Just to clarify, you'd like us to succinct commentary on the information that's been presented today?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
That is the sole, primarily the sole purpose for this evening meeting. Having thought this through, an hour to conduct the budget simply is not enough. And by the end, I will seek recommendation to happen concurs from council how we want to do this again. Because if we're going to keep it away from the main meeting, which is a sole purpose meeting, which I quite like, because we're very focused then, that we'll either set a time or maybe a special meeting. She's got the corporate calendar. So I'm just doing that as some ground rules. So so our timeline is brisk, not the content. There we go. If that's fine with everybody, then I'll hand it over to CFO Rook.
So this is on council's first look at the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget. As in prior years, I've done kind of a base budget with the twenty-two labor model, putting in actual expenses, we know, like the insurance and the debt financing. And then just working with staff to estimate what we need for the twenty twenty-two budget. I'm particularly operating with regard to looking at what we spent in the prior year and setting a budget accordingly. So the purpose of this meeting is really just for council, for me to go through this budget with council, answer council's questions and we stay determined how much we get done in this meeting and any future meetings we might need. If you go to page nineteen, that's kind of a one-page summary of the budget. I anticipate we'll be going through all the other pages on each department individually to answer council's questions. But this is a summary of the revenue and it's a summary of all the attached schedules and the expenditures by department. But then we also come down to the bottom part, which shows just draws from reserves, from and to reserves to come to the cap surplus of sixty thousand. So that's with a placeholder of a zero percent tax increase. We have a surplus of sixty thousand, which technically should cover all of the, at least the operational supplemental requests, but also hopefully some of the capital. So that will be supplemented with whatever tax increase council determines that that wouldn't be at this meeting. This meeting is really just to get a comfort level around the budget and yeah, an opportunity for council to get clarification on any of the numbers. So I think at that point, it's probably best just to jump into the round table and having the answering questions.
Thank you very much, CFO. And Counsel Rabbit, if you're ready to go.
No, I'm not. Can I go last?
Fine, I'll be fine. Counselor Bane, you want to go first? No, there's no answer. I'll keep going. I'm happy to start, but I'll go through the other counselors first.
Okay, what I've got through the committee of the whole agenda doesn't match what what Pam's talking about. So I must have the wrong agenda or up on my screen. Did somebody clarify where I'd find the other one?
I can resend it.
Okay.
Good, that would be handy.
Well, okay, thanks. So we'll, we'll park the two counselors, Counsel Bremer.
Okay, so I just, I guess I have just sort of a series of many questions and comments and I'm glad that we'll have another opportunity to discuss these things. The first sort of question I have is we've made quite a bit of money on parking, so there seems to be a good amount of cash that came in the door. So a general question was if there's any appetite to leverage some of that income against infrastructure upgrades in the form of grants, applying for grants, so parking that money and using it to leverage for grant money, whether that's green grants for infrastructure improvement as they relate to improving the village hall or whether that's E V grants sort of in a transportation thread, because we've already got a standing resolution to pursue E V infrastructure. And to my knowledge, that resolution hasn't been rescinded, so it's still active. It's still council objective to be met. So that was one of my sort of comments or questions. You know, we've got some money in the kitty there. Can we, can we allocate that, some of that towards leveraging it for grants? The second comment that I have, and I just made some notes on your report, Pam, so just bear with me here. It's probably along the same vein. It, so I look at page thirty-two of forty-four where it talks about general fund planning and development. And what, there just seems to be a gap. We had budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for an E V grant in past budgets that that seems to have disappeared. So I don't know if that's not being rebudgeted or if it just got dropped. I was actually hoping we could beef that up based on what we learned last year and our inability to apply for a grant because we just hadn't budgeted for enough. So I guess there's a bit of a conversation to be had around that because budgeting doesn't mean we're going to spend it. It's just an opportunity to apply for more money. So I just want that to be clear. You know, if, if we don't want to, we don't want to be in the same position where we can't actually apply for something. And I think the last piece I had was on page forty-one of forty-four. I guess I, there's a few more, but it just seems like we've added an awful lot of things here that I didn't realize we were calling priorities at all. So one of them being the official community plan budgeting of fifty thousand dollars. I'm, I find that troubling. I don't feel like this is a priority because we have to first start spending money against the original objectives in the O C P before we start spending money to redo the O C P. I don't see any urgency at all here. We're a small community with very strong communication channels to our, to our residents. We do lots of public outreach. We do our have your say on a regular basis. People know what we're up to. And when we put an idea out there, the public lets us know if they like it and they definitely let us know if they don't like it. So we have the air of the community and I find this fifty thousand dollars from O C P up, update, I find it money ill spent. So I'd rather see that go towards infrastructure. I'd rather see that money parked for a grant opportunity. The Lions Bay Avenue Connector project, I know we're budgeting for it, but I, I just wonder if we still have an opportunity to rank this in the eyes of the community where it fits in and sort of priorities of projects. I just want to keep that conversation open. And the last piece here that I had a comment on, this caught me off guard, the Calvin Grove Beach Park Bridge for sixty thousand dollars. I don't remember talking about that once in five years, so I have no idea why that's here. And I'm, I'm just opening up the question. If I missed the conversation or if I wasn't paying attention, I apologize, but this one catches me off guard. And I'd rather spend that sixty thousand dollars plus the fifty thousand dollars on the O C P amendment. I'd rather put that money in a kitty to leverage against grant opportunities that will be coming out in the spring sometime in March or April. So I'd rather set us up for a win there and, and make more money as opposed to just spending it. So that's my comment. Thanks.
I just, a couple of things I just wanted to clarify. Sorry, on the planning, um, this, we put the E V charges in two different places. These departmental, this is just operating costs. So this was the, the design of the E V. I think we originally, we had five thousand and this is just showing how much we're tracking and how much we're rebudgeting. But in terms of the actual E V charging station, that would go into capital. And the only reason I don't have it there for the twenty twenty-two year is I thought by the time we find a grant and apply for it and find out whether or not we're successful, it would be a twenty twenty-three expense. So that would be in the five-year plan, but we're just looking at twenty twenty-two here now.
Sorry, Pam, can I, before we go, can we just, just give me a call, an opportunity could be because we had a grant come up in twenty twenty-one. We hadn't budgeted enough, so we didn't apply. So I just don't want that to happen again because the twenty twenty-two grants will come out in the spring. So that's happening in March. Z E B I will be launching a new round of grants. And in order for us to apply, we have to have money in the bank. That's what I understood. If I got that wrong, I'm, you know, I'm happy to be, you know, I'm happy to be, I defer to your advice, Pam, but I just don't want us to be in the same position where a grant comes out in March and we can't apply for it because we didn't budget.
Yeah, you are right. Actually, with some of the grant applications, they want to show that you have the money and we can cover that off with a grant resolution. So it wasn't in any way dismissing the E V charger. It wasn't my recollection that the reason we didn't apply for that one was because we didn't have the funds and hadn't budgeted. Because that can be taken care with the council resolution. I thought it was just because at that point we didn't feel it was the right fit, but I could be mistaken about that. So, you know, with council's direction, that's something we can add to the capital list is the E V charger. Like I said, I was just trying to budget for projects that would actually happen in twenty twenty-two, but we also don't want to hinder any future applications. I definitely agree with that. And just a point of clarification, when you say putting money in the kitty. We actually, at this point, do not, the only way we're paying for any of this capital is supplemental other than some of the operating is withdrawals from surplus. So we're drawing from the money that's already in the kitty, so to speak. So I didn't want to imply that it was this huge surplus of funds that we draw from. As you can see, this budget only generates about sixty thousand dollars like without a tax increase. So I agree, one of the priorities is going through the capital and prioritizing it because all of this has to be drawn from the kitty in order to pay for it. It's not like a surplus of cash that's sitting around for us to decide how to spend on it. Our surpluses that we've talked about, although they're getting a little more robust, still are not very good. So there definitely has to be a prioritization on what council wants to draw from surplus and reserves to pay for the capital. So I just wanted to sort of clarify that. But yeah, your point about the E V charger, we can definitely, definitely add that. I just hadn't seen any grants yet. But it would be a twenty twenty-two expense.
Sorry, did you? I thought that if we, I think when we are applying for a grant, we have to show that we've got the resolution stipulating that we're good for the municipal portion and where we're going to be pulling it from. But we could do that through showing that it's in the five-year plan under twenty twenty-three. It doesn't have to be in the twenty twenty-two budget year. Right, just to clarify.
And they usually don't even show it in the budget. They just want a council resolution stating how we would fund our share. And we either fund it through a loan, which we do with our larger I C I P grants, or we fund it through a draw from reserves. And then I show them the, a basic financial statement showing how much money we have in reserve. So that part's taken care of.
Okay, so that, that, I guess that's my fear. I was, I was so disappointed last time around because I got the sense it was because we didn't budget for it. So I just want, I just want that to be understood. I do feel like there's lots of infrastructure grants coming out that can, can align with us in the spring. Clean B C is putting out a lot of money. So it just, I just want us to be in a position to take advantage of that and not be caught off guard.
And on that note, I think it might be coming up in the regular meeting, just the Clean B C grant is out. I believe the Climate Action Committee spoke about it for this, but it's more suited to us for the renovations to the hall. We actually didn't qualify for the other grant, as you remember, in November. One is an I C I P grant, which I anticipate working, having the Climate Action Committee really help us with that grant. So it's a very tech grant due in May.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Thanks for clarifying that.
Just on the same note as my previous comment, that grant, we wouldn't get knowledge of whether we succeed at it or not, assuming we apply, until twenty twenty-three. So similarly, that would be putting money into the five-year financial plan to show that we're planning to do that in twenty twenty-three and, and then support it with a resolution.
Yes. So in terms of the process, we're looking at twenty twenty-two, but at the same time, it's not a closed box. So I'm already making notes that E V charger and hopefully the council proves that the C A is the grant for the renovations. That would go into the twenty twenty-three plan. So it would be budgeted. But I, you know, I want to budget in a year. We actually anticipate that we would spend it. And they actually say in the grant guide for the Clean B C grant, they will not be making any decisions. We wouldn't be notified if we were successful until the summer of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Thanks, Pam. Appreciate it.
Public works manager?
Yeah, I also want to just quickly touch on the bridge to the point at Calvin Grove. We've had a couple of residents that have expressed some concern about accessing that point. So we engaged a company to come out and take a look at the, the access and see if we could bridge, bridge the gap with the creation of lot one forty-five, access to that point has been mixed because people would have to cross private property. So again, we had a contractor come out initially. His thought was that it was going to be sixty thousand. I didn't have time to update the budget. We have a revised cost and it's twenty-three, twenty-four plus tax. So it's not sixty. But it's definitely a nice to have that's that's come up.
And on that note, the things that happened to the capital, these are things.
Can I, can I just interrupt? Because I have a question. I'm, I'm still struggling to catch up when I'm listening. What exactly are we talking about?
The bridge.
Sorry, let me just jump in here now. So, so Calvin Grove Park. It has, part of the park is the point of land, which is beyond one thirty-five, now developed, one thirty-five, forty-five Calvin Grove. Previously, one could access the point by walking across that undeveloped lot. Technically, that would be trespassing, but that's what people used to do in order to access the point of land, which is part of the park. Since the development of the lot, that's no longer possible. There have been various comments about the inability of people to access that part of the park. So we looked into what does that look like? And, and, and that's basically what this is about. It's.
Sorry, Peter, maybe for my benefit and then maybe just in case anyone else is confused. So you go behind the washrooms, go there, grassy area, there's a bit of a gully that comes in there. You used to be able to trespass to go around that gully. You want to put a bridge over that gully.
It's a walkway, yeah.
Again, walkway over there. Okay.
That's the concept. Yeah.
And yeah, and that's always to say about, about the capital. I mean, we could, if council wants, I mean, get the operational questions asked and then go through the capital, kind of line by line, giving more information. Like this was a preliminary look and these ideas aren't prioritized. They're just requests from the fire department and public works and things that have been mentioned to us throughout the year. And some requests have come from council. So it's no way indicative of, you know, even staff priorities. We just wanted to get it all out there so you could see it. We may be missing some things and giving a sense to discuss them, prioritize them. And then in future meetings, you know, wean it down and decide what we want in the budget. So I didn't want to imply in any way that this is staff's, some of these things are obviously from staff. But we just wanted to put it out there so council could see all the different ways in which money could be spent. We can cut it completely as well, depending on council's desire.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bremer. Are you done? Sorry, my daughter meant, do you have any more questions? You're good for now. I think we'll, everybody will have a chance to come back. Counsel Kala?
I'm good to just listen in at this point.
Sorry, Jeremy, just to the chair, Rod, sorry. Pam just suggested that we did the operational stuff, even though Norm's touched on the capital, and then we all do the capital line by line. Are we going to do that? I agree. I think it's a much better suggestion.
It might be easier than jumping around a bit. Sorry, I should have suggested at the beginning.
Well, we should talk to me first since I was going to go right to capital, but I'll accept that hit for the team. I'll stick to operational. Let's do that. If we make it to capital tonight, otherwise, fine. Okay.
Do you want to start with capital?
No, no, no.
Important, we could start.
Well, you know, I've got, I've got two points for the operational, then I'll be quiet and then it'll go to Neville and there we go. But that's fine. So, all right. So Counsel Kala, sorry, I forgot your answer. I apologize.
I said, I'm happy to just listen and observe at this point.
Thank you very much. We will ask you to weigh in later, though. Thank you, everybody. And again, just to repeat, we aren't going to rush this budget through. If it takes one or two more meetings, that's what it'll take. And we will work around if there's a preference by council to continue with an earlier start to get it, that's a whole better. I've got two things and I guess I I hate the fact that here we've done so many good things this council has in four, coming up to four years. But no matter how good it is, it's just simply not good enough. And the reality is that we we've got limited capacity to do things. Our revenue stream is very slim. And we've got a future that we don't know about. So I think in terms of this year's budget, I'm going to continue line with what I consider to be the hard level of reality. And to that extent, my recommendation will be, and there's, I'm just picking the number, because it'll generate eighty-six thousand dollars. It's a five percent general tax increase. I think two and a half barely matches our compensation to our staff and other rises and everything is rising in the universe for a variety of reasons. So I'll put that out as a place mark now and I'll consider that a generation of eighty-six. On page thirty-two of forty-four, there is two pieces. I'm trying to make a decent swing of the bat here. There are re-budgeted items, one for seventy-five hundred, one for twenty-five thousand. And the first one is for communications consultant and the second one is planning consultants. I think in the seven months that we've got left, that we could probably waive both of those, but probably not going to use a planning consultant. So the seventy-five hundred dollars will simply drop off the expense line and sit where it currently is in notional reserves. Same thing, I really don't see a planning consultant coming along and nor have I heard an immediate desire for one. So between the two, that's thirty-two thousand there and eighty-six. So there's a hundred grand and a meaningful piece to balancing our budget.
Recognizing their budgets. So after I remove them for the expense, I also remove the draw from surplus. So it's a net zero, it's a net zero impact. But it's fine, but just understand.
I understand. I just, I just, I just don't want to see it there. It's where I, I don't think we're going to spend it. So that would be my piece on the operational. Other than one more question hanging there, Counsel Bremer. To the CFO, how much is left to go to provincial research fund? There's some evolution of a couple of projects in your profile here, but what is the number, more or less?
It's around a hundred and forty-five thousand left for twenty twenty-two, which we will have to spend in twenty twenty-two. And what I've so far have in the budget that we're, what I'm drawing from to pay for is the additional bylaw enforcement hours because, as you can see from that page, I budgeted the same amount of hours that we had last year. A bylaw officer, a single one, Monday to Thursday, and then two Thursday, sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday and staff holidays with the third called in when busy. So there's that money. I have seven thousand for washing, cleaning, COVID supplies, three thousand. And I have a few things proposed in the supplementals to be funded by that, and that would pretty much use up the balance. Like I said, there is an expectation that it all be set in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. I just couldn't find it all. Thank you very much. Let's go back to Counsel Abbott. Those are my operational issues.
Sorry, before we do, if I could just please jump in one second. With respect to your suggestion to kill those two items, perhaps think about it, stick it in the, in your craw, and I think about is putting aside some of this money for the O C P. some of this money for the OCP planning process. As a contribution.
Thank you very much, CEO. I can rant on about the OCP at length. Counsel Barmer, if we'll go to you.
Yeah, just sorry, just sort of, you know, I know if this is the right bucket, planning and development, but if we are looking to apply for a bigger grant, the one Pam had circulated to the CAC, there's elements in that that will require some effort. Capital cost estimating, greenhouse gas reduction calculations, where we could use a consultant, potentially hiring someone to help write a grant. This, these are, these are pretty heavy efforts and I think budgeting for a grant writer and some support is probably not, you know, it's worth considering.
All right. Well, the notes are being taken by the coordinator. So we're going to see this next meeting when we retract this. So there we go. Thank you very much, Counsel Barmer, Counsel Abbott. I've got my watch on. You've got 10 minutes if you want.
Okay.
Get the right document. Let's start there.
Hopefully not to sound like a stuck record from previous years. This idea of separating the operating cost, the true operating cost, and understanding how we do on those year on year. And I just, and I just really feel like we such, so much cleaner if we just had those in one place with the true operating costs or, and then we can talk about stuff that has been CapEx. And then I would also like to see coming out of it, something that says, you know, over infrastructure levy, we've raised 450K in three years, 600 by the end of this year. Spent on CapEx, we've done this, this, and this. Funded from reserves X, reserves have gone up or down. Even a graph, a trend that shows you where the reserves have gone up or down over the four years. Just make it much cleaner and simpler instead of all these numbers. I think that'd be a huge benefit. And I'd still like to try and do that. I mean, and you know, I'll just pick a, maybe a really silly one that you know, that's, it's obvious to me, you know, transfer from surplus, bottom, sorry, pages. Bottom of page 90, transfer from surplus, Curly Stewart Award, 750 bucks. Well, in actual fact, we raised more than 750 bucks last year. It's not costing the tax, it shouldn't cost the taxpayers anything in actual fact, even though I know we still have budget every year and year for 500. Definitely the extra 250 is coming out of the Curly Stewart funds. And in actual fact, Pam, as you know, we've got 10 grands sitting. So we shouldn't need to take anything out of Curly Stewart. Net Committee is determined to get it to a point that, you know, self-funding. So, and I know it's a really small amount, but I'm just picking it because it's a really obvious one. To anyone that looks at this, we're transferring from our surplus, 750 bucks for Curly Stewart. Now, actually, we raised, we raised more than that in grants last year.
We did, but I think that the reason
I know, Pam, and I know you, I know this is presented accurately for accounting. I'm just trying to think if there's a way to dumb it down for those of us that aren't accountants. And I know what seems really obvious, easy to you. Maybe I'm the only dumb-witted one. It's not that obvious to others. So, yeah, anyway. No, that's just a general thing. I think we should keep working.
I think that's an important point that we, this is the first year we've done that. We've been taxing for it every year. And the direction from the Curly Stewart Committee was they didn't want to do any that anymore. You had a really excellent fundraising. Like you say, there's over 10,000 in the reserve now. So I did this in isolation. This will, I deliberately showed this level of detail to show that we're not taxing for the Curly Stewart this year, but we still have to get $750 for the awards. So I'm showing that we're drawing it from the surplus. It's not up above in expenses all the other years. So, and I realize it can be confusing, but that's why I wanted to show that level. You can see the same above for the election. Every year, we tax a portion of the election so that in the election year, we don't have to come up with 15,000. So we're going to pay a few thousand this year for the election and draw 13,500 from reserves. So this is money that we've done for the election, we've taxed previously. And in the case of the Curly Stewart, it's coming from the Curly Stewart surplus. So I think it's important to show it this way. And I did it actually for your benefit because I wanted it to be very clear. You've commented prior that you didn't want to task with the Curly Stewart. And this is showing that we're not. Anything below the line here, we're not taxing for. We're drawing from funds that have been raised through fundraising, previous taxation, surplus, things like that. So that's why that's for that very point, we're not taxing for it. But I have to pay for it. So I either tax for it or I draw from the surplus.
Yeah, and you've explained that before and I, and I do understand that. I just think that many people are going to look at something that says transfer from surplus and think, oh, it's coming out of the village of Cass reserves and somehow out of village surplus.
Okay, and I can change the wording, say transfer from the Curly Stewart surplus. But the money has to come from somewhere.
But if some are that could somehow be clearer in general, that it's not, you know, I mean, that it's coming from something, same way as you do the re-budgeted thing. I'm going to jump down quickly on a few points because, because I think Pam used at least five of my 10 minutes.
On page Q and A doesn't work that way, by the way.
And sorry, on what page, Counsel Abbott?
Page 22. New laptop for Zoom council meetings, etc. Surely that could be COVID-funded as well?
Yes. This is, this is the IT support for it. Kind of the general operation, we're going to have that continued expense over the year. I was just explaining why the communications costs have come up so much when we have extra laptops. There's related annual IT costs. You saw it in the EOC as well, with all the new computers we have, why the IT costs went up so much.
Well, I'll keep that one because you said you seemed to have the COVID thing covered. I just thought that would be something that came about because of COVID. So we could keep taking out a COVID until it ended.
No, I guess my point is it's going to be a continued annual cost as long as we have that computer. So I mean, we could take it out for 2022, but after that, we'll have to fund it with taxation.
Funding, yeah. I thought that would be reasonable. I'm going to jump down the other stuff. So I think we do want to spend some time on the on the CapEx stuff. Just one question, you've, you've got the bylaw officers, same hours as previous year. Did you use the same actual hour, same budgeted hours, or did you use the actuals?
And I used the budget because the budget was a little
Okay, so.
Slow start. So I thought the hours would go up this year because it took us a while to get a third bylaw officer last year.
So if you use the budgeted hours, same hours as last year, how do we get an 8.7% increase? Do these guys get a 9% increase in rate?
So what page are you on?
Page 30. Timmy has used the same hours as last year, but the dollars went up by nine, 8.7%. So did the bylaw officers get a 9% increase?
It'd be the power rate would be the only differential.
If you use the same hours and didn't get an increase, number should be zero.
But they were
We can just go back to the payments and hold the meeting.
So, Counsel Abbott, if you're fine, we'll hold that one and let the CFO respond some other time. Okay?
And I also highlighted, you know, communication consultant and planning consultants as, as stuff that we, we we don't need anymore, we shouldn't need now. But I think they're going to happen. So I had those two highlighted. I already mentioned those. Really, I'm going to flick through some of the stuff. I'm already mentioned some of the stuff because I wanted to get to the CapEx. Smoke testing for pumps at treatment plant. No, that's not the same issues we think we might have with smoke testing of Kelvin Grove.
Sorry, what page, Neville?
Sorry, page 40 or 44. But you include 10K for smoke testing and 20,000 of pump outs at treatment plant. So that's
That is that is smoke testing of the sewer system that we talked about previously. That's $10,000 and the 25K is the annual cost of pump outs.
So this 10K for smoke testing, that's the same issue that you've raised with potential
I and I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Abbott, trying to roll, keep going.
Oh, I think I got to the CapEx, didn't I? Are you supplemental? Are we doing supplemental request in CapEx line by line?
No, let's do, let's do the whole operating and capital thing at the same time. If that's fine. Here's what I propose, once more quickly through the counselors then. To see if everybody has another question or comment they wish to make and then we'll go to the, if you flip to page 41 or 44, then we'll do the operating on the, and the capital ask. Counsel Bain, are you good?
Yeah, I have to apologize. I didn't have a look at the operating prior to now. So I don't think I should comment and let my time go to others.
That's fine, but if you, thank you to offer your time. If you want to send it in writing to everybody and to the executive staff, we'll count that in for the next timeout. Counsel Barmer, any comments anymore? And then we'll go to the CapEx stuff.
No, I'm, I'm good. Sorry, I went across the whole thing right at the beginning. I missed the protocol.
Sorry, there was no protocol because so, in fact, in fact, you were kind of like on the free range there. So you stated, there you go. You're good. Thank you. Counsel Kala, any questions? Are you good with the flow? We'll presume Counsel Kala is good with the flow. And so
Sorry, I just minimized my screen, but yes, I'm good. I thought I, I thought I just kicked myself out of the meeting.
No, no, that's fine. It doesn't work that way, Counsel Kala. Thank you very much for coming back for us. Okay, so we're back to page 41 and 44. What I propose is that we'll do this in reverse order now. And I will go first and then Counsel Kala, Barmer, Bain and Abbott. And I would ask in terms of the time that we've got here, I'm not going to do any politicking and I suggest nobody else do it either. That the staff will take kind of a stream of polls. So we might see a grid on this at the next meeting or something like that. So I'll be very quick. And again, starting on page 41. Operational, building and equipment appraisal, seems like a hard yes to me. The two COVID grants are a yes. The official community plan, I'll stop there and I'll say 50,000 is my input for that. Bill Carey just undertook an OCP and it's $100,000. I checked with Amor today. The last one they did was $100,000. And that included a financial plan too. I would suggest that at our 51st year and with significant urban to rural changes, a requirement for housing development and all the rest, there is no time like now that we need professionals to go street by street, house by house to ensure that third-party validation of our residents' views is felt. So I also like the idea of the CAO is that if we moved off the planning and consultant communication, there's 32 and a half of it. That's a possibility. So I'm a strong yes on the OCP. Painfully, a yes on the CN crossing. I'm a no. I can push some things off because we've done so much on the drainage master plan. But it's on my radar now. Road paving and repairs, I mean, yes, I would ask that the that this come out of our, our gas tax fund. I'm not sure where it fits into this, but I don't think we've actually used the gas tax fund. I priority bridge repairs, I am a yes on that. On the beach park, I'm a yes on that. On the connector, I'm a yes on that. And CFO and reporter, could you put 68667 from reserves? As it's noted above, because I don't think we did a borrowing resolution. KG Park, I'm a no at 60. I'm a strong maybe at 24. I believe for the work shard, 90 and 90 with two 20 annual payments, I'm fine with. This salter for the flat deck, fine. Fire department, I'll call it gear, the 55 grand, fine. Forklift backhoe, I'm a yes. The G3 is small, fine. The washroom driver for turnout gear, I am a no. I think they can fund for that. And
Just a point on that. That's already been ordered. That was actually a 2021 budget item, but it was delayed because of all the issues with supply chain.
So we committed to that one way or the other?
We've ordered it. It's being delivered in May, which actually ties
So then that should be from reserves since we've notionally agreed to it. Thank you. And I've been quick on this one. I thought I saw, oh, sorry, the I stand corrected, use forklift backhoe for auto extrication training for 30. I think that, sorry, I stand corrected. That should be the fundraising piece. And I apologize. So the 30 grand, I think they can fund this this period. And on the washing dryer, thank you CFO. That would be it for me. And going backwards, Counsel Barmer.
I'm good. Thank you.
Sorry, Counsel Kala, if I jumped past you, but so you bypassed Counsel Barmer too.
I would just like to say that, yeah, I'm soft on the, the 50 grand for the OCP. I could live without that being there for this time. And when it, I'm a yes for the beach or the, the connector, the beach park for sure. And I would be, I would be happy to see $24,000 spent on regaining public access to that point. It is a beautiful little spot and people have been missing the access to it. The only way out there really is to swim. Or it's dangerous. So for 24 grand, I think it would be well worth investing in our public spaces.
I like that number more than 60, which was a hard note for me.
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go. Are you good with that then, Counsel?
Yes.
Good. Thank you very much. Counsel Bain and then Counsel Abbott.
Sorry, one, one interjection. The drainage, I'm kind of sitting on the fence. I do hear a lot of comments about drainage from residents in the village. So I definitely think that's something that needs to stay as a priority.
Okay, just on that one, I'll hold your thought on that one to Public Works Manager. So this, the drainage piece here, that's, that's got the big number on it. So is that basically for engineer, an engineering study?
Yeah, essentially, we would go out to an engineering firm to look at a holistic drainage plan that will talk about the different areas where they would drain, the sizes that we need, pipe sizes that we need, dry boy culvert sizes that we need. So yeah, basically, it's, it's an engineering study that would be RFP'd.
Village?
The whole village, yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Counsel Ravich, you can close and you've got five minutes to do so.
Okay. Now, the summer help. Just have one question on that. Invention vegetation and trimming of works. This is going to be handwork, correct? Because I think we have a loose agreement, if not a regulation, that says we're not going to be cutting in the songbird nesting season, which is when your summer work campaign.
Yeah, that's a good point, Counsel Abbott. Yes, mostly, mostly weed whacking and hedge trimmers, that sort of stuff. But yeah.
Sort of protocol to make sure there's no nesting there before they do it.
Actually, actually, we would probably push the season. So rather than summer, it would be autumn, fall help.
Okay, I'd be more positive that was the case.
Yeah.
The bins, just let me get this clear. So we're replacing nine existing bins. And these are the ones that are not bare bins, right?
These are all plastic bins, yes.
Those plastic ones.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a lot of money, but it's something close to my heart. So.
Yeah, the bear, bear proof bins aren't, aren't cheap.
Counsel Rabbit, I hate to press you, but I'd like you to rattle through the list if you can, please.
I won't spend as much time on the OCP as you did then. I will say I'm a hard no for the reasons that others suggested. And, and I think the next council gets to decide whether they want an OCP. And I do echo normal sentiments that we can get a lot less much. We have a good read on what the community wants. And we don't have to spend 50 grand to confirm that. And I think we can do a very simple OCP update. I think it's largely what people want. I'm a hard no on that. Engineering traffic review, now you've discussed this, or I was just still battled to understand how we can get that done for less than that. We really just need engineers later.
We will try to do our best to bring it down.
Drainage master plan, well, I've been talking about this for a while. I, I really wanted to try some sort of field fit rather than spend too much money on an engineer, desktop engineering, but I have to be budgeting for it.
You have to do the, you have to do the calculations to determine the drainage flows. You have to do the, you have to do the calculations to determine the drainage flows and, and the amount of water that, uh, will run off.
We, we've had that discussion before. Yeah, okay, we can come back to, but I'm happy to see we budget something. I'm just not sure I agree with the execution. And I'm road paving, we had hundred and twenty-five year on year. I think we spent one fifty the last couple of years. Um, is that why we've gone up to two hundred? Is that, are we going to?
No, the next stretch, uh, is the stretch of Ocean View from, uh, two seventy down. Uh, and we'd like to get as much done as we can, uh, considering the condition of that road.
Okay, so it'll be one, two hundred this year, then we go back to the normal next year.
Sure.
Tinsel. Okay, um, repairs on eight bridges. Are we talking about the one bridge?
No, this is, um, this is new.
One bridge is not on a table on this part.
You know, it's enclosed. This is new. Essentially what happened during the winter, uh, we had severe cracking and spalling of the concrete in several of the bridges. Uh, we called, uh, I S L out, uh, and this is emergency work that has to be done to repair our bridges. Um, the Cross Creek Bridge, the Isle View Bridge, uh, and several others.
Okay, so this is, um, ceiling of cracks.
It, it's actually, yeah, ceiling of concrete, the concrete superstructure of the bridge.
Like injection.
Before, before corrosion starts taking effect on the interior steel.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So that was a new one. Thanks for explaining.
Yeah.
Um, uh, each book, everyone knows my opinion, so I think we should look at keeping this, this scope as possible, connect to, everyone knows my opinion, can't revisit that, we must have voted and lost. Um, sixty grand now down to twenty-four, I I don't know, I need to look at that. I understand it would be very nice to have. I just think we need to look at that in as, as a weird list on priorities with others. So, yeah, a little bit on the fence on that one. Oh, we're a bit of hard night sixty. Um, Skid Steers and Mini Excavator. So.
So both those pieces of equipment are, uh, very old. They're not even tier one class equipment. So emissions are super, super high on them. And the other issue is, uh, the cab on the mini excavator is rusted through. Uh, so it's basically you can push the cab off the, the chassis. Um, and the bobcat, they're two heavy pieces of equipment that get heavy use throughout the year.
Um, okay, so I, I read this as Skid Steer was replacing the bobcat. Um, with the Skid Steer, not a kid. And I thought the mini excavator was new, so the mini excavator is also a replacement.
Correct.
Okay, and they've just passed their life, right?
Yeah.
Um.
Twice over.
For the, for the truck, is that a replacement or do we now have an extra truck?
That's an additional salter. Um, when we outfitted the trucks originally, when we bought them in twenty nineteen, the salt deck was not outfitted for a salter at that time.
Okay.
So we're asking for a, for a salter. A salter for the flat track deck, yes.
Okay. Well, it sounds like money well spent. Um, fire department, girl, skip over that for now. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the auto extrication training backhoe thing. Somebody has to explain that.
Yeah, so essentially they use a forklift, uh, to move, uh, the, the husks of vehicles around as they're training and doing their auto extrication. So they'll move a vehicle out, they'll do their training on it. Once it's been crushed and cut, cut apart, they'll use the backhoe or the, the forklift to move it out. So that's how they arrange their vehicles when they do the auto X training.
And they, do they do this every, every Wednesday night or once a month or often?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. We'd have to check with Andrew, but it, it's fairly frequent. Um, it's everything from auto fire to jaws of life to any sort of training. Uh, and it all pertains to the Sea to Sky Highway and accidents. So cutting people out of cars, putting out car fires, et cetera.
Okay, well, the reason, the reason I asked, my thought was is doing their frequent draws, um, could they use a piece of the workshop equipment rather than spending thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's, it's a different class of forklift. Our forklift would not be able to carry the, the cars that they, they do training on, sometimes trucks, et cetera. Their current unit is well past its life. It's leaking hydraulic fluid. Um, it, it's in, in need of at least a fifteen thousand dollar repair job. Uh, and I think that's what's driving Andrew's request.
Okay, um, and then you may not be able to answer this, so maybe pain, pain, but if I, am I reading this right? So the old small engine that's, you know, past use and useless and is many years old. Um, we able to sell for ten grand, but we're able to get a new one or a much newer one for ten, seven and Delta's only seven hundred bucks?
Yeah, so the District of North Van is providing us with a, or providing Andrew with a used small truck that they used for the same purpose. Um, at a very discounted rate.
To pay ten grand for another one, yeah?
Uh, that's what they would like to try and get.
Okay. We're looking for a second. I like it. All right.
The reason this is on here, I realize it's only seven hundred, but, um, we have to budget it in twenty twenty. We've already bought it. It was in last year's budget and just again with delays, um, I worked with North Vancouver to, and get all the insurance. And we took delivery of it two weeks ago, so we have it, but it's almost a technicality, but I have to put it in the budget. I realize it's a little silly to have seven hundred dollars on a capital request list, but, um, and then obviously, so the ten thousand seven, we've already paid, um, proceeds from the sale of the old truck. Yeah, we, we really have no idea. I think there's been a tentative offer made about six months ago, but I don't know how realistic it was.
Okay.
Last two items, Neville?
Um, no, I don't have any comment on the last.
Thank you very much. Uh, here's what I suggest colleagues is that I will ask staff now. Uh, the council members of, of mind on a variety of the things, uh, very big picture on the operational side, very more directed on the operational and the capital budget. Uh, I think that, uh, we'll leave it with the CFO to do the changes on the operational, if she thinks. On the budget side, just so we don't go over this again, uh, I think it would be helpful if this could be on a grid or a spreadsheet for the next timeout, so everybody can see where they are on this one.
And so.
For the operational and the capital. Otherwise, we're going to have the same discussion all over again.
Yeah, so I just don't understand what you mean by a grid.
Uh, many people were in favor of many of the items, some were opposed to some of them.
You mean to see, I can't do that for operating, you're talking about the capital.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And, uh, so thank you very much. So let's conclude that one. Uh, I'm sure we're ready, uh, tidy up here and go into in camera very quickly. Um, so I think the next piece is mayor reports, I have none, council members, I think. Probably not for the committee as a whole and committee is the same thing. There being none, new business done, uh, public questions or isn't a member of the public here. Uh, so we will, um, not close, we will go into closed. Any committees that will find that, but, no. Yes. So, and the reasons that we will go are for reasons in the absence, for discussion in the absence of public.
So we're not going to return to the minutes and take, get those taken care of at the beginning, we set them aside.
We take them. This one's seen the camera? Oh, no, the cast, sorry. Okay, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Back to Counselor Abbott for the minutes. Thank you very much, everybody. So we're back to item number four, Counselor Abbott. You had some, uh, pieces on the minutes.
Um.
Are you going to let it go?
Is everyone else good? Nothing else? Is everyone else saying they have nothing on the minutes?
I had nothing.
I made a comment. That was about it.
Um, well, I guess I'm going to.
There's something obvious, Neville?
I can't remember. You know, I had something, but as I said, I've lost that file because they both did the same file name.
Let's hang on, just let me.
Let's just say I accept the minutes.
Yeah, or we could, um, bring them back to.
May I simply coordinate, help me here? How can we make this, these minutes appear in another meeting?
Um, you could postpone it to the next meeting, postpone the motion for.
So finally postponed to the next meeting, Counselor?
I, we, I'm okay with these minutes.
You're good with it?
I think so much of this stuff, it's such, it was a while ago. We've discussed this in other, the other times. Um, there's no need to revisit this.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for your generosity on that. Okay.
Quick question, can I just ask a question? I mean, Neville, if you do find something that you find is an error, is, is that not something we could correct retrospectively at the next meeting? If you read through and you find something obvious that, that's troubling?
Yeah, well, I, I think it'll be okay. I'm flicking through it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Counselor Barmer. Okay, uh, we're going to go into close and.
Call the motion, gonna call the motion.
Right. I'm sorry, technically, I'm calling a motion on, uh, receiving the November thirty and December twenty-first. Sorry, December first, twenty twenty-one minutes, uh, as circulated, uh, that's, uh, motion's been called. All those in favor, yes. Close, no. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for staff for keeping me on the straight and narrow. Uh, so, and the reasons that we back to discussion in the absence of public is personnel procurement, legal matters. And at the meeting, be close to public on the basis of matters to be considered under the following sections in your charter. And where required, the concept does consider that matters could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they're held in public. And this is for sections ninety-one, A, C, E, G, I, J and N. And section ninety-two and B. Counsel, there's not anticipate reconvening the open meeting for any purpose other than to adjourn the meeting generally and report what applicable. I will put that forward, that motion. I have a second here. Thank you. All those in favor of reasons going to public and what we will do afterwards. Please confirm by saying yes. Those approach no.
Yes.
One more, Carrie, thank you. Okay, uh, Ms.